Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's regular meeting of the Portsmouth Planning Board for October 15, 2009. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, and we will be voting on the approval of the minutes from the September 10, 2009 Planning Board meeting, and approval of the minutes from the September 17, 2009. We will not be voting on the minutes from the September 24 meeting. So with that, do I have a motion for-
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. We'll now open up the public hearings. I will be recusing myself from applications A, B, and C, so I will turn the gavel over to Vice Chair Roberts.
Mr. Chairman, I will be doing the same.
Okay, thank you.
Application A is the application of Murray LLC owner for property located at 235 Commerce Way and Brora LLC owner for property located off Portsmouth Boulevard and Dunlin Way wherein preliminary and final subdivision approval, lot line revision, is requested between two lots having the following: Lot 1-8B as shown on Assessor Plan 216, increasing in area from 196,918 square feet (4.52 acres) to 247,954 square feet (5.69 acres) and with continuous street frontage on Commerce Way and Portsmouth Boulevard; and Lot 11 as shown on Assessor Plan 213, decreasing from 290,076 square feet (6.66 acres) to 239,040 square feet or 5.49 acres and with continuous street frontage on Portsmouth Boulevard and Dunlin Way. Said lots lie in Office Research District and Office Research Component of the Office Research Mariners Village Overlay District where a minimum lot area of three acres is required. And who do we have this evening to speak to this?
Madam Chairperson, my name is Malcolm McNeil. I represent the applicant in this proceeding as well as items B and C. All three are somewhat interconnected. Favorable action on item A is necessary to proceed to items B and C. As an overview, we are here solely because these permits with regard to these three applications have expired. You have previously approved all three of these applications. There is no substantive change from what you previously approved, and the only changes that have been made are as a response to comments made at the most recent TAC meeting. There's been no intervening municipal law changes that would have a bearing on the applications and their present status. The TAC meeting was on September 29. All of the comments made by TAC are acceptable to the applicants and have been incorporated into the plans and have also been referred to in the memo supplied to you by the Planning Director. We've reviewed the memo of the Planning Director of October 13. We agree with it for two reasons. One, it accurately reflects all of the components of the project and the conditions, and most importantly, we agree with it because he recommends approval. I suspect there will be more cases like this as hopefully the economy is improving, but this is, there's nothing new here. As to A, B, and C, there's nothing new but minor comments that we will respond to. Here with me tonight is Corey Caldwell, who will speak to the subdivision issue which the Chairperson has addressed, and then after you introduce the other two, Patrick Kermans from Apple Door will address those particular projects. I'd like to make this more difficult and spend more time at the podium. I had trouble finding my way in here with the political signs. I haven't been here for a while. I was having trouble finding the entryway. I don't blame that on Mr. Coviallo, but I blame it on a few other people. So with that, I'll turn this over to Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you, Malcolm. Madam Chairman, members of the board, Corey Caldwell from MSC Civil Engineers and Land Savers. As Attorney McNeil indicated, this approval appeared before this board July 20, 2006, where preliminary approval was granted. A year extension was also granted by this board on July 26, 2007. The proposal is to relocate the common boundary line of MAP 216, Lot 18B, property of Murray LLC, and MAP 213, Lot 11, property of Brora LLC. The common boundary line exists today as depicted on the plans with the bearing of South 542400 East (100.92 feet) and labeled Lot Line to be relocated. That boundary line runs from Portsmouth Boulevard up to the southeast corner of MAP Lot 1-8B. What we're proposing is to relocate that boundary line approximately 500 feet easterly to the line depicted bearing the label, South 461539 East (103.83 feet) and labeled Lot Line to be relocated. The result of this movement is that Lot 1-8-B would increase in size by 51,036 square feet or 1.17 acres. Frontage along Portsmouth Boulevard would increase for that lot by 502.71 feet. MAP 213, Lot 11, would therefore be reduced by the same figures. This adjustment maintains all conformance with zoning regulations, doesn't affect the developable portion of either lots. Tonight, we're seeking preliminary and final approval of this application. Upon this board's approval, we would install monuments as required by the Department of Public Works and provide GIS data to the department to update city maps. Be happy to address any questions, board members.
Any questions from the board? No? Okay, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak to, for, or against this application? Anyone wishing to speak to, for, or against, please come up. Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion that we approve the application as presented with any stipulations that might be in the memo.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the chair votes aye. Let's see, do you have a suggestion about?
You can do the separate one.
Okay. I'll read B. The application of Murray LLC owner for property located at 235 Commerce Way wherein site review approval is requested to construct a three-story 69,693-square-foot office building with related paving, utilities, lighting, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 216 as Lot 1-8B and lies in the Office Research District and the Office Research Component of the Office Research Mariners Village Overlay District.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Patrick Kermans. I'm with Apple Door Engineering. As Attorney McNeil had stated to you, the site plans before you were previously approved by this board back in March of 2007. We were before TAC on September 29, where we received positive recommendation to you folks with stipulations. The project entails its three-story 69,693-square-foot office building with associated site improvements. Site improvements include 339 parking spaces and seven loading spaces. Also, it will include new paving. As part of TAC Stipulation Number 10, we'll be adding, we'll be doing a shim and overlay, one and a half inch overlay from the end of the driveway here, all the way to the intersection of Market Street and Portsmouth Boulevard. In addition, we also, with that stipulation comes Stipulation Number 11 presented by the TAC, which is to provide 50-foot butt joints wherever the new paving on the street abuts adjacent streets. That has been reflected in a note that has been included on your site plan. Full detailed design of the shim and overlay will be included in the roadway improvement drawings, which we are currently working with the city on. The proposed site will have two driveway entrances. One will be on Commerce Way and one will be on Portsmouth Boulevard. The project will include new sidewalks, including pedestrian connections to the adjacent property 215, which will be the next item on the agenda, and in addition, a pedestrian connection out to the street to a new proposed public transportation shelter, which is proposed as part of this project as well. The project will include the installation of new underground utility services to the building. In addition to the typical water, sewer, gas, electric, and communications, we're also going to be including a master box conduit as required by TAC Stipulation Number 1. Also as part of the utilities, the existing hydrant is currently located where the new drive is going to be. We're going to be relocating the drive here, and as part of TAC Stipulation Number 3, we revise the hydrant to show a six-inch feed with a six-inch gate valve, and we've also added a note to the utilities plan indicating that the size, the final size shall be coordinated with the Department of Public Works. Also along the line of utilities, to address TAC Stipulation Number 9, the sewer currently will be coming out of the rear of the building and tying into Portsmouth Boulevard approximately this location, this location, I'm sorry, and from here to here. The DPW has cambered the sewer line, and the sewer line is crushed, and as part of the TAC approval, one of the conditions was that we either reroute the sewer to the corner or we replace the line that's in Portsmouth Boulevard, and the applicant agrees to replace the line that is in Portsmouth Boulevard from the manhole that we're tying into to the intersection of Commerce Way and Portsmouth Boulevard. Also as part of the design, there's a closed stormwater treatment system that's being installed. The large parking area in the front, the majority of the parking area, will be captured and detained in an underground system that will wrap around in a U shape as shown on your grading and drainage plan, and the stormwater will be slowly released out the detention system into a downstream defender where it will be treated and discharged to Commerce Way. The remaining portion of the drainage for the pavement is in the rear here, this small rear parking area, which is, will be flowing towards a new bioretention cell that we're proposing in the rear. As part of the TAC approval, we were, stipulation number six was to revise our bioretention detail to reflect the latest UNH Stormwater Center Filter Media Spec, which we have done so in the detail sheets that we provided you. Another site improvement on the property is landscaping, and you'll folks will notice that I handed out a landscape plan to you. If you look, you may have already picked it up, but in the sets that I gave you guys, there was a printing error, and the trees were frozen when we printed them out, so there was no landscaping on those plans, but I sense the 11-by-17 handouts reflect the plan that we are proposing. That's the same landscape plan that was previously approved by you folks, has not changed. The only change to that plan was the addition of, or the revision of a note on there, the last note that indicates that the min-branch height shall be six feet and that the max height for the shrubs shall be three feet. That's about it for 235. Should I hold off until?
No, we'll just stick with 235 Commerce Way now. Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Mr. Hopely.
Patrick, could you? The underground detention system-
Sure.
-you touched on. The idea is, is to capture from the catch basins around the parking lot. It flows into this piping system, and then just, is that piping system pitched in some way, or how does it work?
The, the actual detention system's not pitched, but as it fills up, it spills out at a slow rate through, through the outlet pipe which is pitched. The point of that is, what we're trying to do is match our pre and post development flows.
So slowing the flow, the flow that leaves the site, slowing it down?
Exactly. We're detaining it in the structure that's beneath the pavement and slowly releasing it, and it's being treated before it's outletted from the site via downstream defender treatment unit.
Were you involved in the prior design? Was this the same design?
This is the same exact design that was previously submitted, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Yes.
Yes. Regarding the landscape plan, I'm glad you did come in with it tonight.
I apologize.
Sorry. I was a little shocked, but in any event, I'm just wondering that, this is a commercial area butting up against a residential area across Portsmouth Boulevard to some extent, and I'm wondering, in your opinion, will the evergreen trees that you're, you have evergreen and deciduous trees, and I'm just wondering whether you have enough evergreen trees to kind of block that light from going across Portsmouth Boulevard in the evening at that corner? Specifically, the corner, I'm referring to the corner of Commerce and Portsmouth, that area there. Yeah. Well, whether you could stand to throw in another decidu, evergreen tree, or?
Well, yeah, certainly, the, as I stated, the landscape plan before you is the same plan that was previously approved, but we're certainly open to adding landscaping to that corner there if it means providing additional screening.
Am I out of bounds here, or?
No.
No. Okay, I, I would like to see that.
Okay.
Any other questions, thoughts? Yes, Ms. Kepfer?
I'm sorry, two things. One is totally, if Chris Dwyer were here, she'd be all over that and want some assurances that the residential properties across Portsmouth Boulevard would have adequate screening, so if you imagine a car light on facing that way with the shrubbery, and it looks like there are some shrubs, but I think we'd want to make sure that you captured as much of that light in that landscape buffer as possible. So I, I don't, I mean, that, that was one concern, but because I didn't have this, I just didn't know how it was going to get addressed.
Sure.
And the other, and this is an apology more than anything, because I wasn't here before, but, and, and I'm not an engineer, I had a hard time understanding the grading and drainage, and, and I think I have some clarification, but in these pipes that surround the facility?
Yep.
So they sit under the ground and then, I mean, the gradient shifts around, so, but you have a lot of additional impervious surface, and I'm just wondering if you can explain a more rudimentary way for somebody like me, how the water's expected to flow, how these pipes are going to capture that water, and how we're going to make sure that you don't have an awful lot of runoff from the site.
Yep. Well, what is, the, the surface itself is graded in a manner that pitches the stormwater runoff to the catch basins.
Okay, and there's a catch basin at the end of, one on Portsmouth Boulevard?
Well, there's catch basins throughout the entire parking area. Proposed catch basins throughout the entire parking area that will capture the stormwater runoff on-site.
Okay.
I'm trying to get it up. There's actually-
Inlet protection barriers, the catch basin, and so those are kind of like at the little islands all around.
The inlet protection barrier, it's an erosion control practice that gets installed into the catch basin-
Okay.
...during construction, and that's a, a erosion control measurement to keep sediment that's, you know, from, running off from the construction that's going on. It'll trap it in, in the inlet that's in the catch basin.
Okay.
So that's, that's actually a, during construction, practice. Those get taken out after construction, but that's what, those little hay bale symbols that you see there?
Right.
Those, those are the actual, that's specifying inlet protection. The actual catch basin is the structure itself that's in the ground. It collects the storm water.
Okay.
And then when it collects the storm water into the basin, it, it flows via gravity flow through the stormwater pipes into this large detention system that's under the ground.
The, the sort of-
U shape.
...sides of a square around.
Yep, exactly. It's, and what that is, it's, it's actually flat. There's a, it's, it's a minimum of three feet below the ground. The base of the detention is, it's, it's got zero pitch, and what it is, is it just collects the water and it detains it, and then it slowly releases the water out of the outlet pipe that's discharging to the abutting property there.
Okay. I, it, you know, it's probably just my misreading of the stoking, but I didn't see how all the catch basins, you know, that there's a downward slope from a catch basin to that. I mean-
Well, it's, it's actually, the downward slope from catch basin to catch basin to the detention center is in the pipe.
I see.
And the pipe actually, on the grading plan, the labels, where they, you know, they call out, for example, construct 20 linear feet of 12-inch HDPE pipe at a slope of .005%.
Okay, so that countermands the natural slope. I think that was the concern I had, because if I, I was looking at the plan and looking at the gradients, and I was thinking, how is that, how does that feed? But okay, thank you, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Coviallo?
How does the, the stormwater system slowly release it? Is it a weir or a small orifice that-
It's a weir structure, I believe. It's, it's outlet structure, and it's shown on your detail sheet, sheet C9. It's a V-notch weir inside of a concrete structure.
Say, say you get a bunch of rainfall.
Yep.
And you, and you, you know, you get rainfall amount to, it fills up the stormwater system to a point where it starts pouring over the weir.
Yeah.
Okay, slowly, and then it stops. Isn't that water just sitting there forever now, and any, any stormwater from that point on, is this, is this going to go right over that weir, and there's, there's no more retention? Or is there, is the system have small orifices that slowly let it leach out over time?
There is no infiltration, and-
It seems to me, you know, great for the first few storm events, but once it fills up to the weir, there's no evaporation going on. How is that, and then what's the point of having, you're having a big storage tank of water that, anything coming in on the input is going to go right over the output?
Well, the output is actually at, the, the output is actually at the bottom invert of that structure, so it's going to continuously drain. Your outlet pipe that's at the, is, is at the same elevation-
So it is, it's an orifice, that it's, it's the diameter of the outlet pipe is what's restricting the whole flush of water coming through.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not a weir, it's-
Well, there's, it's a combined structure, actually. There's a, there's an underdrain plus a weir for the larger storms.
Okay, I see here. All right.
Yes, Mr. Blankensett.
Can you just clarify? I thought I had heard you say that it discharges it onto the abutting property?
It's discharging via a drainage pipe into a catch basin that's located on 215 Commerce Way.
Yeah, if you could point on that map, just so I can-
Sure. Right, right about in this area here, if you're looking at your grading plan, you'll see that there's an outlet that goes to, it's a manhole with a bypass weir that, there's a, there's actually a stormwater treatment unit right there. Water's flowing through that treatment unit, and then it's discharging into the adjacent catch basin that ultimately discharges into the drainage system in Commerce Way.
Any other thoughts or questions?
If there's someone over there, I do, but-
Sure, Mr. Coviallo.
All right. Any motorcycle parking?
Yes, there is. Sheet C1. In the, the back corner there, there's a pad for motorcycle parking.
Oh, gotcha. And how high is the, the fence for, is it detailed fence for the, around the dumpster?
Um, don't, I don't know if there is a detail enclosed for you folks, but it will be, you know, a six-foot-high chain link fence, a vinyl chain link fence with slats to, to screen the dumpster appropriately.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, Cindy?
Patrick, I don't know if you have the benefit of a letter that, that we were provided with tonight from a resident out in that area, but-
Sure.
-it has to do with two things, lighting and screening for 2 and 3 Osprey Drive. Can you just show us on there, or I don't know if you have another plan with you, where you could point out to us how, where 2 and 3 Osprey Drive are relative to this development? I think I know where they might be. I mean, they're off that plan, but, thanks.
I, I don't know the exact location of the two properties, but I'm assuming they're back towards this area in the neighborhood back here.
And just, just related to that, I wonder if, you know, we raised the issue of more screening on that corner. I think we should probably have staff-level review of that because we'd like more screening there, but we also don't want to block site distance on that intersection, so that's probably stipulation I would add. And the other point that's raised by this letter has to do with lighting, and I may have missed the lighting detail in here, but where there may not be one. I know there's a, there's the illumination plan, but if you could just tie it to lighting, what, what the lighting's going to be, if it's-
Sure. The fixture is not in your detailed sheet, but it, it's a dark sky compliant, full cutoff shoebox fixture that, the lighting levels are detailed on your photometrics plan.
Right, right, yeah. I see the levels, but, and do you have any problem with adding a lighting detail to the sheet?
No.
Thank you. Yes?
I just looked at the subdivision plan, and it does show 2 Osprey Drive diagonally across from, from the site.
So it's on that corner, bottom left?
The lower left, very low, lower left.
Right, okay, thanks. Thank you. Any other questions? Questions for the applicant? Thank you, Patrick. Do you have anyone else in your-
I'd just like to make a comment with regard to the landscaping. Landscaping was previously approved, that's why we did it the same way. In terms of Mr. Rice's comments, if you'd like us to address that further, we're willing to do that, but we'd like that to be with the staff if possible, so that there's no, there's no need to come back there.
Yes, I think that was going to be a stipulation.
And the photometric plan was, was previously considered as well. The fixture was reviewed by technical staff.
Thank you. Anyone in the public wishing to speak to, for, or against this application? Anyone in the public? Seeing no one rise, I close the public hearing in a way to motion. Yes, Mr. Coviallo?
Could I ask one more question? I'm sorry.
Oh, I think we can slip one more in there.
It could be a crowd complaint. I, I wonder about the timing. Will the, will the lights be turned off at a certain time in the parking lot?
Yeah, that works. I don't remember if we talked about that before.
No, I, I don't, I don't know. Don't forget, across the street is a hotel that is of substantial size. I'm not sure, although I did that project, I am not sure of a restriction with regard to the lighting at the hotel. I would anticipate that people would be working late at this facility periodically, and certainly safety lighting would be out there as well as reasonable parking lighting. So we hadn't confronted that question previously, so we, I don't have a specific answer for you. At Commerce Center, from my own experience there, the, the lights are not shut off at 5 or 6 o'clock. They're, they're left on for a longer period of time because many of the tenants work longer hours. There is a veterinary facility that you may recall you approved that is open expanded hours as well that's slightly up the street from this location. We, we would have it open during, have the lighting on as much as was reasonably necessary for the reasonable occupancy, but obviously, if the lighting wasn't necessary late at night, we shut it up.
So driving by 3 o'clock in the morning, I shouldn't see the, the full parking-
Unless there are lawyers working there, and then the lights would probably still be on.
So, yeah, I think we better have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve site plan with six, with six stipulations listed, and I'd like to add to. One, that additional evergreen screening would be placed on the corner of Commerce Way and Portsmouth Boulevard, and that would be at the staff level to make sure we have adequate site distance, but some additional, additional screening for the purpose of the surrounding residents, and secondly, that a lighting detail be added to the plans and that that lighting fixture be dark sky friendly.
Second.
Glad to see you're eager, yeah, yes.
I was going to second it, but I wanted to add, if it was agreeable to the maker of the motion, another stipulation. There is a note on, the underground drainage has me not concerned for the design, but concerned for the installation. I don't know that we've ever seen a system as intricate as, as this, and I could have sworn three years ago, two years ago, I had put a condition on the prior approval, although we couldn't find it. although we couldn't find it today, we look at staff level, concerning special inspections of this site work and having those inspections be at the approval of the Public Works Department. And there is a note on C10, but it's a little vague. Design engineer shall provide sufficient inspection to certify that the system has been installed for the approved design plans. I, I'd just like a little more teeth in that and some involvement with our DPW. Maybe as a special inspection engineer at their discretion. It's pretty important. It's a lot of pipe here.
What, what kind of a schedule would you envision?
Well, at all phases. I mean, there's a lot of site work here that seems to be focused on drainage and getting the drainage to the respective locations. Patrick, you can weigh in on this if you'd like.
Sure, I mean...
I mean, this is pretty involved.
We're more than open to working with staff to, to come up with a, you know, a schedule that, for inspection. We're not adverse to that at all.
The maker of the motion is open to a stipulation if you want to make one.
Yeah, that's a pretty long stipulation, but we get the idea, I think.
Yeah, that's clear enough, okay, okay. And do we have a second on that?
We did.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Patrick.
I want a clarification that maybe help both the applicant and us. Are you concerned about everything? Are you concerned about elevations, the size of the piping, the grading? Is all, all three things or all?
Everything, the entire design itself, that it gets implemented properly. There's a lot of earthwork here, a lot of places I think that could hiccup if it's not done right.
I just wondered as, like, you know, trying to predict, as, you know, hire an engineer and inspector, what do you want that in that report? What do you want them to say? Yes, the grades are correct? Are you going to be happy with that?
Yeah.
Or do you want them to say the grades are correct, the materials are correct, you know, it's like what?
And the installation of the systems are gone in per, per design. I mean, as you pointed out, Tony, that, that V-notch weir has got an elevation assigned to it. Hope we get, hope we get that elevation set properly in the field. I mean, I can just see a lot of things happening here that...
Yes, Cindy?
Maybe we could try and come up with a more concise stipulation that would be, that there be DPW oversight to ensure that the plan is constructed as designed?
That's fine.
If I can maybe add one more stipulation, which is to, as I understand it, that the landscaping plan that we have in the full-scale set is incorrect, that, that the stipulation be that we have the correct landscape plan in the final approved, which I'm sure they'll provide a full-scale copy.
Okay. So I think that makes four additional stipulations, okay?
Total of 10.
Total of 10, okay. So any other discussion, thoughts, questions? Yes, Ms. Kepfer?
I just have a question for Mr. Tinter. When I look at the photometrics plan, you know, I sit there saying, well, this isn't my area of expertise, so maybe I should just can it. What does this tell me? I mean, it, because it, you know, you go down to zero at the property edge and I, I know I don't want to have a lot of spillover of lighting, but does this tell me when only the safety lights are on or does it have, is this all part?
I assume, I, I believe, I'd rather ask Patrick, I believe this is all, all lighting.
It's when the lighting is, all lights are on.
Full light, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the chair votes aye. And moving on to C... The application of Tane Properties LLC owner for property located at 215 Commerce Way, wherein site review approval is requested to re-stripe the existing parking lot and add a paved aisle to an abutting property with related paving, utilities, lighting, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 216 as Lot 1-8A and lies within the Office Research District.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Patrick Herman's with Appaloosa Engineering. Well, this, this project just winds in with the, the office building. The existing parking area for this office building, a portion of it actually falls on the 235 Commerce Way property. And in order to construct the site for the new office building, we are reconfiguring that parking to a single tier, one aisle, two sides, two spaces, spaces on either side as part of this project. And what that will include is the parking reconfiguration that I just spoke of. The curb cut will not change, the location of the curb cut, just the angle of the drive coming in will change to the one, one tier of parking all the way through. Also included in this design are new sidewalks and along the face of the building and in addition to provide a connection to the adjacent office building. The proposed project, the inclusion of landscape islands results in a 5% increase in open space from the existing property. The proposed project also includes new landscaping on the parcel. And as part of the project, we will be doing some drainage improvements. There's five catch basins right here throughout this parking area. And what we'll be doing with those catch basins is equipping them with oil-water separator hoods. The oil-water separator hoods, they'll be, the eliminator hood, which is, was a recommendation by the Department of Public Works at TAC. With that, that's about it. Like I said, this, this is just, this needs to occur because this is being built. This reconfiguration here.
Thank you. We have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Hopley?
Hold on a minute. Patrick, I'm pretty sure based on the grading in the drainage plan that there's a proposed stair between the two lots.
Correct.
I couldn't find any details of how you want it built.
The stairs will be constructed as part of the retaining wall. But what we can do is add to the retaining wall detail sheet a stair detail.
Yeah.
Those, those segmental block walls, they come with a step detail and they're standard.
It looked like there's a difference in grade of six feet.
Uh, no, there's a difference in grade of about, you know, the highest point is about three and a half feet.
Ah, because I was going by the 60, elevation 65 and then in the parking lot, you've got a contour of 59, but, but that's sort of in the middle of the parking lot.
If you're looking on the adjacent parcel behind that wall, you'll see that the grades actually pitch at a three-to-one slope down to the top of that wall.
Okay.
So that there is a reduction in that wall height. So, yeah, if we were going to, if it, there was no slope there, it would probably be about six feet, as you said, but with the, with the pitch, we are able to lose that three feet, so the max wall height's about three and a half feet.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Hayden?
Patrick, I assume same dark sky friendly?
Yes. There will be dark sky compliant fixtures and we will add a fixture, we will include that fixture.
Any other questions, Paul? Okay, thank you. I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak too far against this? Anyone wishing to speak too far against this application? No, seeing no one rise, I close the public hearing and await a motion. Ms. Hayden?
I'll make a motion to approve the four stipulations and add a, add two more stipulations. One, that the plans reflect a lighting detailed, the type of fixture to be dark sky compliant, and also a stair and handrail detail, stair and handrail detail. And I don't know if there's a seventh stipulation that would want to be added similar to Mr. Hopley's from the previous application or not?
No, I think, no, I'm, I'm fine.
In terms of the...
Construction.
Yeah, right, okay.
Second.
So we got a second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paige. We'll move on to the last public hearing on the agenda, which is Item D. The application of Portsmouth FFI LLC owner for property located at 650 Bothwick Avenue, requesting a conditional use permit under Article 6, Section 10-608B of the zoning ordinance for the restoration of approximately 1,258 square feet and drainage swale maintenance of approximately 1,239 square feet, all within an inland wetland protection district and inland wetlands protection district buffer zone. Said property is shown on Assessor Plan 234, is Lot 7-6 and lies within the general business district. And the action in this matter has been deemed to be quasi-judicial in nature. If any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest, that issue should be raised at this point or be deemed waived. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Chris Rice with TF Moran, civil engineering with TF Moran, on behalf of the owner of Fairfield Inn. Here before you tonight for a conditional use permit. I don't know how much background the board might have on the project. This is the Fairfield Inn, which was originally built as a Suss Chalet. The Port Inn and the Route 1 traffic circle sit right about up here, and this is Hodgson Brook in this location. Earlier in the spring, the Fairfield Inn started experiencing some flooding in their basement. My understanding, their maintenance personnel went out and noticed that there was a backup here. There's an existing headwall with a pipe in this location. There was a backup and they basically cleared a channel to release the flow to Hodgson Brook. In June, city staff and DES met on site. They determined that the owner impacted wetlands without a permit. We were hired and we met out on the site with DES and we determined through topography and walking the site that what occurred, what created the blockage was is this, this swale in this area right here was originally designed as part of the 1985 site plan when the hotel was originally built. In the 24 years or so that it's been operating, the swale has not been maintained, vegetation has grown, silt has, the swale has silted up. Oh, I'm sorry. The swale has silted up. There's some undulations in the swale, so there's no longer positive pitch in the swale. So the water was backing up and what we've agreed to do with DES is restore the wetland area, which is the dotted area on your plans, back to its original, original state, including vegetation and elevation. And we would also, as part of that, dredge out a portion of this swale to give it positive pitch again. I'd have to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for the applicant? I've, I've got a couple of questions here. I don't see, and maybe I'm missing something, is there a detail for silt fence?
There are two packets that you have. There's a detail in the wetland restoration package. There's a detail for silt fence in Section 4 of that package, I believe.
Stand on the drawings themselves?
There was only one drawing for, that showed everything for city staff. I can add a silt fence detail.
Yeah, if you could just do that, and the other concern I have is that it says install jute matting and New England wetland seed mix. If we could just get the typical detail that shows a jute netting as well as a seed mix on this.
Sure.
I'm assuming the contractor will have this in the field, not...
He's going to have both packets, actually. It was, the reason it was done this way is originally it started off as just a restoration plan. And then when we discovered that we had to do some work, not really associated with the restoration, but was within a wetland area, I met with DES and I called Peter Brits to say, do I need anything from the city? And that's how we got into a minimum expedited impact permit for the swale work and a conditional permit through the city for...
If you wouldn't mind, I mean, it seems like the sheet one of one, there's plenty of room for, if you could just put all the applicable details on that sheet, I think I'd rather have them in both places than just in one, so.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you. Mr. Coker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm assuming that you would have no problem reporting to DPW on an annual basis the maintenance of the swale?
Yes, that was part of the, a recommendation from the Conservation Commission last night. They recommended two, well, there were two actions last night. One was a favorable recommendation of DES for the minimum impact expedited permit, and the second was a favorable recommendation to the planning board for the conditional use permit. They did have three recommendations to the planning board. One of them was a maintenance program, which I'm going to add a note to the plan along with the details now, that states that they have to sweep the parking lot a minimum of two times per year, spring and fall. One of, the second condition that they had brought up, which I wanted to address as well, they had requested that the maintenance staff of the hotel participate in some sort of seminar, basically kind of a lunch and learn type thing where they would be taught either by myself or Mark, basically the things not to do in a wetland, how to protect it, and so on and so forth. The owner's not opposed to that at all. The only concern that they had was that they have a high turnover rate with their, with their staff, their maintenance staff and their housekeeping staff. So what they asked if they could do was have Mark or myself prepare basically a document for them. They have an annual training program that everybody in the, in the Fairfield Inn attends and they would make that document part of their annual training so that everybody each year is, is basically getting a refresher course on it.
Yes, Mr. Coker?
That was a very long answer. I guess what I was looking for is that a report be made to the DPW about the maintenance of the swale. I don't care how it happens, whether it's you guys or something like that, but a report be made. And, and that's a stipulation that I would propose.
Okay. Mr. Covial?
A couple of questions. One is, out of curiosity, what is maintenance of it? Is it mowing the lawn? Is it, what is it?
They would, I mean, any silt that accumulates, they would take out. They would, I mean, every, I think it's periodically or as the vegetation grows, they would cut it down to a reasonable height. That's pretty much all that it is. It's just that it has never been taken care of over time and over 24 years, silt has, it just kept pushing through it and eventually it just dammed up the swale essentially.
Okay, and then second question out of curiosity, are they stipulating the type of sweep that gets done on the parking lot? Are they just a sweep?
It was just general parking lot sweeping.
Would it be, would it be okay if we suggested a dry assisted vacuum sweep? Because there's dramatically different types of sweeping, believe it or not. There's you spraying water on it and then trying to sweep it into the, into the scooper that comes along with it. But the act of spraying water on it actually makes a lot of the things stick to the ground that you're trying to get.
Right.
The better option is to do a dry vacuum assisted sweep and if that's acceptable to, to the applicant, I'd love that.
It is to me. I can't honestly say if that's what they currently do or not. I'd be happy to find that out and I can pass along with Peter Brits and if that's, I don't know if that's what they do, if it's acceptable to you, I'll just have them continue to do that.
I guess I'll, I'll ask for it as stipulation and if it's something that's, later on you decide that you can't, it's not palatable, you'll come back and, you know, suggest something else.
Yeah, we can, your point's been made, I think, aptly so. Ms. Hayden?
The, the third stipulation from the CONCOM, that a natural shrub buffer be maintained along the edge of the swale closest to the hotel. Can you just point out where that is on there?
Yeah, right here, it's, it's kind of far away and I can bring up the plan closer if you'd like, but there's a, there's a lighter green color just on the south, southern side of this dash line, which is the swale work and that's the end of the wetlands right there, is that, is the different green here.
Okay.
That was another comment that I wanted to address only because we want them to maintain the swale. Putting shrubs there might, in that location, might kind of lead them in a different direction than doing so. So I wasn't sure if that was a recommendation that we could discuss a little further. We're happy to plant a couple of additional shrubs. I just don't want to prevent the maintenance of the swale because 20 years from now, we'll be right back in the same situation where nobody's taking care of it and it'll eventually dam up again and...
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear because you show some, the dog, additional dogwood plantings, I think, kind of to the left of the swale?
That is part of the restoration plan that we've agreed to with DES is to do those plantings along with the wetland seed mix.
So would, would you be tying back dogwoods along that full edge between the, you know, the linear edge?
Initially, we were thinking of a, you know, roughly a 10-foot-on-center spacing along, along that edge. But again, that's what we wanted to discuss only because we need people to maintain it. Space them out a little further, do a couple less. I just don't want, I don't want it to be inaccessible to somebody to be able to do the maintenance.
Right. And, and does that need to be acceptable both to Peter Brits with him, his input, but also to DES and Dave Price? Would they have desires to have input on that edge planting?
I can run it by David. We're going to be planting the plantings, those plantings along the, because it's so close to the edges of the swale, we'll be, we'll be planting them outside of the wetland boundary, so I don't think that DES would have an issue, but I can run that by David.
Then, then probably the, the CONCOM's third stipulation, it says the natural shrub buffer is maintained. It needs to be planted and maintained, I guess, really, right? That's the intent?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll now open up the public hearing. Is anybody in the public wishing to speak too far against? Second time too far against, third and final time, seeing no one rise, I'll... Second time, two, four, against, third and final time, seeing no one rise, I'll close Mr. Rice?
I'll make a motion to approve the applications, the application with the stipulations as filed in the city memo.
I'll second that, but I think it's, the stipulations is recommended by the Conservation Commission with a couple revisions. I'll make a revision to their stipulation number three, which currently reads that a natural shrub buffer is maintained along the edge of the swale closest to the hotel in area currently consisting of mowed lawn. I would just want to modify that to add the word planted, that a natural shrub buffer is planted and maintained, and add to the end of that sentence, and that this planning be reviewed and approved with Peter Brits, and ensure that the functioning of the swale is not impeded. And then, based on what I heard, I think we probably also want to modify their stipulation number one to address Dawn's concern. Right now it reads that scheduled parking lot maintenance to include sweeping, catch basin, cleanup happen at least twice a year, spring and fall, and I think we should add, and that that be reported to the Department of Public Works, and that this method of sweeping be acceptable to Public Works and the environmental planner, Peter Brits. Does that address everybody?
That's great. Thank you.
If I may?
Excuse me, was that a second?
That was a second.
Well, no, that's good, now we can have discussion on that motion, so, Mr. Coker?
I personally would prefer to keep that annual reporting to the DPW separate, only for clarity purposes, that's all. And that, I mean, that says what it says, period.
Second has no concern with that, as long as the first has no concern with that.
Maker of the motion has any?
I'm not sure that they understand.
Question with that? We just want to pull it out and make it its own separate line for that, I believe is what they want to do. Great. Any other discussion on the motion?
Do we need to have a change in stipulation number two with respect to the document that's going to be prepared for the annual staff training, is that what it?
Yes.
Yeah, because it was, it's not going to be an ongoing thing, it's going to be an annual periodic type thing.
Right. My understanding from the, I think the Conservation Commission was more thinking of a one-time seminar and talking with the client, that's great for all the staff that's there now, but a year from now, half their staff will have changed. So they were thinking, they do do a current annual training seminar for all their staff, they wanted to incorporate this document into it so that everybody, each year, it basically gets those tips and instructions.
It's recurrent, recurrent training, okay. That's amenable to the maker of the motion?
Certainly is.
Ms. Gafford?
Yes, can I also ask that that document have visual indications, that it not be just written in English, but have visuals?
Sure.
Is that amenable to the maker of the motion?
I think so.
Right, thank you, I just wanted, any other discussion before we call the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing, the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
They'll teach you to make a motion.
That's the last time, I said, I'm done for the year. I'll see you in January.
Robert, rules are in order. So we'll move on now, that concludes the public hearings, we'll move on to item three, city council referrals and requests. And the board action in these matters will be legislative in nature, and if any person believes any member of the board has a conflict of interest on any of the four applications, that issue should be raised at this point or will be deemed waived. I'll read in item A, under city council referrals and requests, the request from John Ducey for the Page Restaurant and Bar, the property located at 172 Hanover Street. For one, the placement and illumination of a temporary sign on the Vaughan Mall, and two, reconsideration of the board's recommendation for a projecting sign. I'll turn this to Rick, can you give us anything?
Yes, well, this is a situation where, you recall, there was a previous request for a projecting sign which the board recommended against and the city council denied the license, voted against the license. The owner came back with a couple of requests in sequence, it ultimately ends up with them requesting permission to place and illuminate a temporary sign on the Vaughan Mall. It's basically, it looks like a freestanding sign in the landscape, in a little landscaped area that they've created, and to reconsider the recommendation for a projecting sign, and ultimately they came back with a smaller sign area, and a statement that it would be externally illuminated rather than internally illuminated. However, the temporary sign, and I put the word temporary in quotation marks because this, the sign that they're requesting does not fall into the definition of a temporary sign in our ordinance, we don't have a provision in our ordinance for the type of sign that they're requesting. So, but the sign that they, that they're requesting a license for, they have already installed and have already installed the wiring and the conduit without asking for a license or any type of permission from the city, and so we're in the process, and the wiring was done without electrical permit, so we're in the process of trying to enforce that and get the violations removed, and we're recommending that no action be taken on these, on this until, until those outstanding issues have been, have been resolved. The recommendation, as I've written it in the memo, says defer action until outstanding issues regarding the required license and permits have been resolved. I guess I would recommend that perhaps we, to be more specific, we recommend postponing this to the November meeting, assuming that that can be resolved by that time.
Mr. Coviell?
I would buy this site today because I was curious whether I was looking at a photoshopped image of a sign or was it there in reality? And there was one, what I think is a sign, that isn't picked up in this report, in that they have a sign similar to the Wet Bar logo, the freestanding sign, on the building, and...
On the building or on the awning?
On the awning.
Yes, that is there, yeah. And they have, they have received a permit for that sign.
In your packet, actually. All right, dated 24 September? Oh, okay, he's, all right, I got you.
So the property should have two flush attached signs and one awning sign.
So there would be a flush attached, what is permitted is a flush attached sign facing Hanover Street, a flush attached sign facing Maplewood.
I naively assumed that, I didn't look at the numbers here, I assumed the photos following were describing what was here, but no, they don't, it's separate.
Photos following, which photos?
Well, you have pictures afterwards, and so I assume that those are all...
Well, on exhibit?
I'm pointing out my mistake, what I did.
Well, maybe you're not. So if you're looking at exhibit B, is that where you see the?
Well, I see here it says applied 9/2409, it says flush attached, quantity one, it's two, basically two with quantity one, number one, number two. Then at the bottom it says awning, number 11, and so you're saying that awning is the one, the thing I just described? And so I was expecting when I turned the page, I would see the three images, and I was like, oh, well, there's no awning one here. So I'm describing my mistake, more than we need to know.
Counsel Dwyer?
Clarification from Rick on the postponement. The postponement is, I assume, related to the work that was inappropriately done, but this other kind of request that we have no regulation for, how will that be handled?
Could you?
Well, your suggestion that we postpone, I think, is related to we can clean up this problem of work that got started that we didn't approve. But what about the sign for which we have no, this other sign, this Wet Bar sign, for which you said we have no?
Well, if you, in our, signs that are covered by the zoning ordinance are signs that are essentially attached to a building.
Right.
This is a sign that is like a sandwich board.
Right.
It's in the, so it isn't, so it really doesn't count as a sign, so when he calls it a temporary sign, it really is not a sign under our ordinance because it's, it's not attached to a building, it's in the city property, so.
Oh, that is, that's city property right there. That's the clarification, okay.
And we would not, and we would not include it in the allowed sign area, it could be above the allowed sign area.
So it'll be a request for a sidewalk obstruction?
Exactly.
Okay, got it.
Ready for motion? I am. I recommend that we defer action on this request until all the outstanding issues regarding required license and permits have been resolved.
Second?
I was, I was actually hoping for a postponement to a time certain, to November.
I'm sorry. Postponed to a November meeting.
Second?
Second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing, the chair votes aye.
That application really screwed me up.
We'll go on to item B, letter from Charles A. Griffin Esquire for Richard B. Duddy and Sue Ellen Duddy regarding release of a portion of McClintock Avenue, which is a paper street.
In my, in my memo, and I would like to say that in my haste after doing the zoning last week, I didn't have as detailed a memo as I would have liked to have done by the end of the day on Friday, and I simply recommended to vote not to grant the request. Subsequent to that, I've had a couple of conversations, email exchanges with Attorney Griffin, and he has some additional information he would like to present. He had requested that he be able to address the board as, on the application, but because he has additional information he would like to present to the board, he has actually requested that this be postponed to the November meeting so that, so that he has a chance to meet with staff, and we have an appointment set up for that, and also so that the board has a chance to receive the additional information.
So move.
Second.
Moving second, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing, the chair votes aye. We'll go on to item C, under city council referrals and requests, the letter from Peter Lachlan for the Foundation for Sea Coast Health for placement of a sign for the community campus at the intersection of Lafayette Road and West Road.
In this situation, there's a request to have better visibility for the community campus for, I think it's family first, families first, but in looking at the site, we, it was, it became evident that this could actually add to some sign clutter because there is an existing sign. The proposal is for, to place the sign on the south side of Campus Drive at the intersection with Lafayette Road, and there is an existing directory sign for the industrial park on the north side of Campus Drive, and it's, and that sign is visible if you're coming north on Lafayette, Lafayette Road, but it's invisible if you're coming south, so it's really useless at least half the time. And so, our suggestion was that we try to see if in some way that the city and the community campus and the industrial park tenants could work together on relocating a sign into the middle of the intersection perhaps, into that traffic island, if we can do it with, causing sight distance issues. And I've talked about that with Attorney Lachlan, and so we're recommending that you request staff to work with the representatives of the Foundation for Sea Coast Health and the industrial park tenants on a proposal for coordinated improved signage at the intersection of Campus Drive and Lafayette Road, and then I would add on, and to report back to the planning board.
So move.
Second.
Moving second, Mr. Coker?
Just a question about precedent. There are businesses down on West Road that may or may not wish to make an issue of this. How would the planning department propose to deal with a business, let's just say for the sake of discussion, that said, "Well, if they can have it, why can't I be part of that?"
Well, that, actually, that's the point, because we have, some of those tenants have a, already have signs on this directory sign for the industrial park, they're individual businesses highlighted, and we think that we can actually have this a win-win for both the businesses and the community campus.
But not at this location?
Well, across half a lane of, you know, instead of doing it on the, on the north side where they are right now, they have a, they have a sign right now, right on the, on that same corner, but on the opposite side from where the community campus is requesting a sign.
Okay.
So, so it's just to move it maybe 15 feet south, and to have a better, better visibility, 15 or 20 feet south.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Oh, we did, I'm sorry. I'll call, vote all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing, the chair votes aye. I apologize for that. Last city council referral and request is item D, the request from Harrison Allen Workman to name a private road off Sagamore Avenue as either Workman's Road or Workman's Cove.
And the, I believe you have the letter from Harrison Workman in your packet, and the, this is a fairly simple request, there's a, there's a small private road with, I believe, four properties on it. They all have Sagamore Avenue addresses, but they're invisible from Sagamore Avenue, and they have difficulties with everything from ambulances to pizza deliveries. So Harrison Workman has made this request, and the original request was, as stated, to name, name the road as either Workman's Road or Workman's Cove. This request has been reviewed by, by the planning department, police department, I'm sorry, the Department of Public Works, it should say in the staff report, the Department of Public Works, police department, and 9/11 coordinator, and they've all indicated their consent to this. And subsequently, I've had some traded phone messages with Mr. Workman, because I wanted to just make sure that the other properties on the road were okay with this, and also to get a sense of what their preference would be. And he has said he's contacted the other property owners, they're all, they're all, they all understand that they would have new addresses now, and they're okay with that, and the consensus is that they would like to name it as Workman's Cove. And so the, and interestingly, this is actually a small waterfront business district, so it has a little lobstering operation down there. So the recommendation would be to vote in favor, to vote to recommend to the city council in favor of naming the private street as Workman's Cove.
Mr. Hopely?
Just a question for Rick. Does the 911 coordinator, does he, I mean, I've just never heard of a road called a cove, and so as long as they're comfortable with knowing that that's a place, a street, instead of a waterway.
They, they were comfortable with either, yes.
Could it be Workman's Cove Road?
Right, yeah.
Well, it was, I think they, it could be, but that was the, if you feel strongly about it, it could be either, or it could be Workman's Road.
Now, Mr. Coker?
Just a question, I recall in other times when requests to change the name of something, which in essence, this is what we're doing, some neighbors said, "Look, I don't want to change my license, and I got, you know, letterheads, and I have all this." May we assume that this is a unanimous request from all of the neighbors?
I didn't ask that specifically, I asked him to check with his neighbors, and he said he checked with, I think he said he checked with most of them, I don't know that he's heard back from all of them.
And it looks like Counsel Dwyer may have.
Well, I think where Dawn is going is right. I, in the name of precedent, I think we should do a public hearing, and I have no problem with it, but I think we should just do a public hearing to, to clarify that, because it could be, it could be a bad precedent.
Would that be a planning board public hearing or a city council public hearing?
I can't remember.
Would we recommend it to the council who would then recommend a public hearing?
I think that's right.
I think is, is that, I believe, how it would go. So, Ms. Hayden?
The difference here is that this is a private road. If this was a public road we were talking about, I would completely agree with you, but this is a private road, so.
Right, but, but public citizens are affected, the fact that they happen to live on a private road, and we watch out for the interests of our citizens, no matter what kind of road they live on.
Okay.
Do we want to defer that to the council? Because I would tend to agree with you, I hadn't thought of it, that if it's a private road, I don't know if anybody's got...
But for the record, I have no objection to renaming it, I just want to make sure that everybody's in favor of it, that's all.
Well, and maybe we just need to think about this, whether it's, we can't as a board direct the city council that they have to have a public hearing on this.
But by way of the discussion here tonight, does that then put them, not unnoticed, but alert them to our concerns?
Yeah.
And could they then take it from there?
Sure, yeah.
An alternative?
Oh, yes.
Four phone calls. If the planning department could call each of the affected people, and as long as they're all in agreement, call it Disney Lane, I mean, it doesn't matter, I mean, whatever everybody's in agreement with, and that would avoid having to do a public hearing, and I'm assuming it has to be posted, and, you know, all of the other stuff that goes involved with it.
What would be your suggestion, Rick?
We could do it either way, we could make the phone calls if you feel that is appropriate, I'm not sure in terms of precedent whether.
I'll defer to Counsel Dwyer on that.
Well, I'm just thinking of in terms of precedent, there is a business there, you know, it's kind of like something Tony raised last week, without knowing what people's plans are or how things are going forward, if there were 100 residents on a private road, we would do a public hearing. I mean, it just seems to me, we have public process, we should use it.
I would recommend, how about, how about if we do a public hearing at the next planning board meeting? planning board meeting, 'cause I don't think there's any time urgent to this, do it at the planning board hearing, then we could in good faith report back to the city council.
Then we can recommend it, yeah, I think that's fine.
Is that...
What you said.
Is there like a motion?
That, that would be delightful.
Can I have a question first?
Oh, Mr. Covial?
I'm gonna put this delicately, um, I'm sure everything in the letter is, is probably accurate, is there, has there been any historical review, and so we wouldn't embarrass the city with naming the street after something we don't want to name it after?
No.
No, it's a, it's a neat area, though, if you haven't been down there.
I know, I know where it is, but I just, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not from Portsmouth, and I don't know the history of, of the Workman family, I'm wondering if there's any historical review, and I'm trying to put this delicately.
I think all the more reason to do a public hearing, and then the historical community can come out and say, "Excellent idea," or, gee, we thought it was some different history. How does that sound as a way to resolve it?
What she said, Tony.
Sure.
Ms. Geffert?
I just have one question, would all of these people, nineteen, twenty-nine, twelve, ten, would they get notice of the public hearing?
We can make that happen.
I think that might be helpful.
That's good.
So your motion is?
I would make a motion that we, uh, postpone action on this item until we hold a public hearing at the November planning board meeting.
Second?
Second?
And can we just ask that notice be given to the affected lots of that public hearing, specific notice, please?
So done.
Second.
I'll call the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposing, the chair votes aye. Well, thank you, that was well done as usual. Um, that brings us to item four, the planning director's report, there's two items, item A, seventy-three Prospect Street, administration approval of amendment to site review approval, walkway surface material.
Um, this is a, a, a small development that was approved, um, several years ago, and, uh, in, in the original site, uh, plan, not necessarily as a condition imposed by, um, by staff or by the planning board, but, um, apparently volunteered, at the, in the original site plan submitted, there was a brick walkway, uh, leading from a, an asphalt sidewalk, going, ending at a stone dust, um, uh, walkway, and in the intermediate time, um, the ownership of the, of the lot has changed, uh, and the, the current owner is trying to close out the site review, um, conditions, and one of the things that he requested was to, uh, basically change the surface of that walkway from brick, um, back to asphalt, um, consistent with the nearby sidewalk, I guess, and he, um, uh, we had David Defosis from Public Works go out and look at, at the site, and he saw no objection to that, and so I issued an administrative approval, it was something that wasn't, um, again, a planning board requirement, and, and therefore, and there was no discussion, apparently, looking at the records of that, so it didn't seem to be a, a major change in the site, in the site plan.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, I'll read in the final, uh, report, item B, six fifty Bothwick Avenue, Portsmouth FFI LLC Fairfield Inn, administrative approval of amendment to site review approval, wetlands restoration under conditional use permit, see item two D above.
And this just goes along with the, uh, item two D, the conditional use permit that you, uh, voted to grant, basically, there were just some very minor changes to the site plan, uh, dealing with the, um, the landscaping and the Swale and so forth, and so I have not taken any action on that, just to inform you that that's one thing that will result from this, is that I will, uh, sign an administrative approval of the site plan just to reflect the changes you already approved. And, and because you had a hearing on it, it didn't seem like it was necessary to have them come back another month to do a site plan change.
And that's a good move. Um, and you, Mr. Covial?
Unrelated, this, sorry.
Go, no, you go ahead, 'cause I'm, I'm done with that, I have another thing too.
Okay, um, I have a question about how we're getting, um, our department memorandums, are, is it a, is now a new policy of yours, or is it something you're trying to, we're not getting, uh, historical TAC information?
It's interesting that you should ask that.
I'm on a brilliant board member raised...
Yeah, another board, brilliant board member, two seats to my right raised that day, and, uh, that is, uh, we will fix that, we're going to, we're going to, uh, supply complete, um, TAC and Conservation Commission, um, memo, uh, minutes to you, um, as the, uh, we're not gonna try to integrate them into the report, and that was a decision we made previously, but we do, we didn't mean to leave you in the dark about what was actually discussed, and when Patrick was discussing, uh, TAC stipulation number three and TAC stipulation number five, and probably you were all confused, 'cause you didn't have those stipulations in front of you, it would have helped to see what he was, uh, telling you he had taken care of already, so we will do that in the future.
Okay. Thank you, give us an update on where we stand with...
With the zoning?
Yes.
Yes, um, that was the point I was going to raise, so you have the, uh, new zoning ordinance, which you've received tonight, and that has gone to the city council, uh, today, and will be, um, discussed or presented to the city council on, um, on Monday, the city council's meeting on Monday, and at that point, uh, the, um, uh, the council will be asked, I believe, to, uh, schedule first reading, uh, for, for the, um, for the ordinance, and, and the proposed date, although it is not a, it is not a, uh, obviously is totally up to the council, the date that we, that we proposed was, uh, November sixteenth for the first, for first reading. Um, we are, I, I was trying to get the, um, new ordinance and the new map onto the city's website, uh, today, but, um, the, uh, IT person who was going to do it was not in, so I've, I've given them all the information, and hopefully, within a day or two, it'll be up, replacing the existing information on, on the city's, on the website that deals with the, the land use regulation revision project, and we will have copies available, um, in the planning department, and city clerk, and library, and wherever, sure, we will do the same thing we did last time, uh, so we'll be moving ahead with that.
It probably goes without saying, um, could you, in the newsletter that gets put out, the community newsletter, let it, let it be known that the, uh, the one approved by the planning board.
And just to add to what Rick said, we'll also be getting that out to, um, the HDC and the CONCOM as well, and, and just to be clear, that at Monday night, City Council, I mean, there's not gonna be a presentation, it's just that they're receiving it, they'll receive it tomorrow in their regular council packets, and then, you know, what, what staff has asked them to do is schedule first reading, probably they will...
The beginning.
The beginning.
Beginning, great.
And, and also along with that, we are beginning to see a number, a lot of interest in people submitting plans to, um, get themselves vested under the existing zoning, uh, where we're, and actually, that was really what prompted the three, the first three hearings tonight, was to get, get them in before the zoning changed.